Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, February 15, 2022, Cortumadera Town Council meeting. For you those that may have missed it, we just got out of a joint planning, special meeting with the Planning Commission and Adam regarding the housing element and it was recorded. So if you get a chance, please take a look at it because it was a great meeting with both governing bodies. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the media order. I actually have the gavel tonight that Rebecca gave me. So with that, I'll go and call the media order. Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please? I think you're muted.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman?
Here.
Councilmember Mangan?
Here.
Councilmember Avasio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
And Mayor Cesar?
Here. And with that, we can all please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up our meeting in public comment. This gives the public an opportunity to speak on any subject they want to that is not on the agenda. So if you wish to speak on a topic, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you and Rebecca will bring you over. And while we're waiting to see if any hands will be raised, Rebecca, do we get any emails versus tcmmmail.org?
Thank you, Mayor Cesar. No, we did not receive any emailed public comments for open time.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any hands raised?
I am not seeing any raised hands.
Thank you. So we will go ahead and close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight. We will move to item number four, which is our consent calendar. This is just a group of items. Our routine, they've been previously discussed and they don't require further discussion. They can't be passed by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public can wish to have an item pulled for further discussion. So with that in mind, is there anybody from the town council staff or the public that wishes to have an item pulled from the consent calendar for further discussion? I don't see anybody from town council, no staff members, and I don't see any hands raised. And did we get any emails in, Rebecca?
We did not receive any emailed public comments on the consent calendar and I am not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close out public comment and I will bring it back to the council for a motion to approve consent calendar items four A through four I. Is there a motion?
Vote.
Thanks, Bob. Is there a second? Eli seconds it. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Cesar.
Yes. Thank you. With that, we're going to move into public hearings. We have five A, which is regarding the Cortumadera Residence Inn project. The way the format will use this is Adam's going to give a staff report. The applicants are going to give a presentation, 25 to 30 minutes plus or minus. We'll bring it back to town council for questions, open it up for public comment, and then it will come back to town council. And I believe there's three resolutions that we are going to be voting on. And then quick question for Amy. Can we vote on all? Do we have to vote on those separately?
If it is the council's pleasure, we can vote on them together, but we do need to read the full item before we take the vote. So the public is aware of all the items that we're voting on.
Okay, all right, thanks. So we'll maybe circle back with you when we get to that point. So at this point in time, it's Adam, I want to say Adam's night, since we just got through with the special meeting, planning commission, and he gave a whole presentation on the housing element. And I'll turn it over to Adam regarding the Residence Inn project. Thanks.
I'm going to let Todd do a little introduction to this as well because he's been around with me on this particular hotel item a while. So.
Thanks for that. You like your wingman?
Thanks for that, Adam and Mr. Mayor members of the council. I do want to start off because I don't think, I'm just proud of the team. I'm proud of our planning team. I'm proud of the planning commission. And I'm really impressed and proud of the applicants in this case of what we've all gone through and the importance of partnership in our town. You know, this project's important to us. That hotel is important to us and our relationship with ownership is very important. And I just wanted, I just wanted to give a little bit of background of how we got here. You know, this, this, this process actually began, this, this project came before the town in 2014 and lasted over three years, ending in 2017. And you know, at the time, you know, there was a lot of disappointment, a lot of frustration, I think, on all sides, at the community level, at the applicant level, at the town level. And you know, we really had a setback in 2016, 2017 as a staff. You know, Adam and I and the team really spent a lot of time of how can we focus on process? What can we do to really set the town up and our applicants up for success moving forward? A couple of things came forward through the commission and staff. In 2016, we passed the MX1 zoning district regulations. There was a few reasons for that, but that was an important ordinance to be passed. And then in the summer of 2020, we passed the, we adopted the town's hotel bonus ordinance. Those two are really critical of helping applicants in the town, you know, get to yes, setting everyone up for success. And so over the past few years, there's been some discussions at all levels, really on this process, on the hotel process. You know, and I want to, you know, take a moment to thank the applicant for their persistence and really reconsidering the possibilities at that site and bringing in a new team and really thoughtfully trying to address the concerns that were raised through that three-year process. And what I can tell you is I believe that the applicants have been responsive to the community and the commission's concerns that were expressed back in 2017. And I also think they're very responsive to the town's hotel ordinance bonus and the town's MX1 zoning district regulations. And I can share just from the outside, because I haven't done the hard work. I've watched this from afar. But I can tell you that, you know, I know that the planning commission and staff are very satisfied to see the results of their collective efforts pay off with this comprehensive proposal before you today. This is the first project that has come before you under each of the previously mentioned ordinances that were passed. And so really at a high level, I want to thank Adam for helping me with this, but I want to give you a few highlights of some of the key differences of this proposal from the prior proposal. I think most significantly, this project is retaining the pond. It also has enhancements to the pond habitat. The development of the public amenities included include new landscape paths, benches, interpretive signage, public parking spaces that are essential to create new public space for town residents and hotel guests. The new project design incorporates more modern, high-quality finishes and it works with the site's fiscal constraints rather than working against them. And I think it results in a unique building shape and identity for that property. There are more incorporated, there's more details incorporated in this design as before. They include the facades are different and the facade treatments, they use planner changes to break up the massing. And they also have step backs to bring the project back away from Tamil Vista Boulevard. There's also some key detailed energy and resource efficiency programs, programming within this. There's a 380 rooftop solar panels. There's 14 EV charging ready parking spaces. There's a laundry water reuse system. There's a more defined community access programs, programming for the community groups to utilize meeting space and also potentially be utilized in those times of emergencies, which is a huge benefit to our town. And then this, this proposal was also included in the previous proposal, but I think it's, and I think the team considers this one of the most significant physical improvements. It's all the improvements along the Tamil Vista and Madera Boulevard corridor. Along Tamil Vista, there's undergrounding of the power poles, there's widening of sidewalks, and there is a number of improvements both on Madera Boulevard and Tamil Vista for pedestrian safety. And again, I'm just going to leave it there. I'll leave it to the experts to walk you through this process. But again, I just want to thank the applicant's team for their thoughtful approach and approaching the technical and process requirements presented to them. You know, for this, for this project. And again, I'm just, if you haven't watched those, the process, I think it was really just a team effort with the commission, staff listening to the commission and really setting the stage to ensure that we have a hotel that we can all be proud of within our community. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Adam.
Great. Thanks a lot, Todd. I'm going to actually hand the baton over to Sean Kennings, who's our contract planner with LAK Associates. Sean has worked with us actually on our hotel that's currently under construction and helped us through that planning process as well as worked with the town on our cannabis ordinance and other projects with the town. So also town residents. So Sean, I think many of you know, but I'm going to give it over to him to provide the presentation and all of us will be available as long with Christine Gaspar, our Sequoia consultant, for questions at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Todd. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sean Kennings, LAK Associates. As Adam said, I worked on this as the staff contract planner. I'm going to share my screen with my presentation. Hopefully you can all see that. So as Todd said, and Adam, this is the Cortumadera Residence Inn rebuild. The resolutions before you tonight are the conditional use permit, hotel floor area design, hotel floor area bonus, preliminary precise plan, design review and sign permit, and an initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting plan. The purpose of the meeting is to receive the information related to the proposed redevelopment and to make the considerations specifically consider the project based on that hotel floor area bonus ordinance, which was approved in the summer of 2020. The applicant has gone through the required community meeting in October of 2020 as well as a planning commission concept review in January of last year. And recently, they received their approvals from the planning commission in January of 2022. As you know, those three resolutions are the environmental document, initial study mitigated negative deck, the conditional use permit, which is tied to the hotel floor area bonus, and then the preliminary precise plan, which is before you tonight, which includes the designer view and the signed permit. I'm going to try to go about this as quickly as possible, but I know it's new to some of you. The applicant is going to make their own presentation and they'll go over a lot of the technical aspects in the design and how they came about their proposal. Again, the property is 5.53 acres at the intersection of Madera and Tamil Vista, just west of Highway 101. It's currently got a mixed-use commercial general plan designation and the MX1 mixed-use Tamil Vista district zoning designation. Currently, it's a Best Western branded hotel, 110 rooms. It has a vacant restaurant, a pool in the middle of the site, 188 parking spaces, and the aforementioned 0.64 acre pond, the northeast corner of the site. As Todd explained, this, this property and project has gone through many iterations. There was a application from 2014 to 2017. It required significant land use entitlements, including a general plan and zoning amendment. It was asking for an increase in the floor area from the allowed 0.34 to a proposed 0.55. It had a significant environmental evaluation pursuant to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, which had a draft environmental impact report. That EIR was never certified. The project was never approved as there were many concerns over the proposed filling of the pond and the mitigation measures to go along with it. There were, there were concerns about the scale and the proposal of the architecture. No formal design was ever provided and the applicant withdrew the project in 2017. As we discussed, the hotel floor area bonus ordinance was approved in 2020, which allowed various things like hotels in the C3, C4 district, which would allow for bigger and more intense development. Applicants had to go through the requisite public process. And most importantly, there were enhanced findings that would require a planning commission to, to make the findings regarding design and aesthetics, environmental sustainability, community integration and enhancements to the public realm. If an applicant adhered to that scoring system, they could get a max 0.7 FAR and a max 47 foot height in total building height. Where currently, right now, it's 35 to 40. That hotel floor bonus, again, increases from a 0.34. You had to go through the designer view and conditional use permit process. And they had to prepare an evaluation of a preliminary project to make sure that they were meeting those bonus points of which the applicant provided in their preliminary document, a request for 0.29 bonus, 12 in floor area for architecture, 0.08 for environmental sustainability, 0.06 for community integration, and 0.03 for improvements to the public realm. And we'll talk about that later, how they meet that system and how staff evaluated it. So the proposed project for you tonight is a new 149-room hotel, approximately 118,000 square feet with a maximum of four stories on the eastern side of the building with a maximum of 47 feet to the top of the flat roof, the parapet, not including mechanical equipment or hotel elevator enclosures. This proposal includes 169 parking spaces, of which many are EV-equipped. Again, it meets the, the floor area bonus for the sustainability, community integration, the design. The design incorporates bird safe design features related to windows. The applicant will speak to that. There's enhancements to the pond habitat, although no enhancements to the actual water portion of the pond, but removing invasive species, planting new natives, creating a public path. And then there are many community integrated features like a bicycle share program, shuttle program to local shopping and other businesses. As Todd mentioned, there's the laundry reuse gray water system. The applicant is also including opportunities for members of the public to use conference and meeting rooms. There are the 380 roof-mounted solar panels and backup batteries. In addition, this project would, would feature about 350 total guests at maximum occupancy. That said, the applicant doesn't believe that there would ever be 358 guests at one time. That's just the maximum. It would include opportunities for 75 full-time employees, three shifts of 20 at one time. We've included the vehicle trips here to give you a sense of, of the activity. It'd be 658 total vehicle trips spread out through the day, but only 28 increase or 28 new trips during the AM and 29 during the PM peak hour. So that's the two-hour window when there's the most amount of traffic and that's coming and going. And, and that 28 and 29 is, is shown here to, to show you that it's, it's not a massive increase to existing streets. And again, the applicant is proposing new pedestrian improvements and landscaping improvements along Tamil Vista Boulevard as well as new pedestrian improvements to enhance pedestrian crossing along Madera Boulevard. This slide just gives you a sense of the existing scale and the proposal. You can see the, the existing buildings are laid out in a hatched with a dark black outline and the proposed is the gray building in the middle there. And you can see how much it's pulled back from Tamil Vista Boulevard. Here's a sense of the proposed elevations. Again, I'm not going to speak too much about the actual architecture. Let the applicant present for that. More elevations looking from Tamil Vista into the core or along Madera looking towards the entrance. Here's some renderings, what it will look like along Madera, the entrance there with the covered canopy, the signage along the building, and then what one might see driving along Highway 101, traveling south. The applicant has selected a, a choices of materials and colors based on, on examples throughout Marin County.
Hey Rory Garrett, I just left a message. Okay, it looks like you're in.
Sorry. The applicant also provided a hard copy material board last week so that, so that staff and any members of the council or the public could come in and see exactly how those materials in their renderings actually look like in, in real format. And again, I'm going to let the applicant speak specifically to those material choices. The applicant's proposing an enhanced landscaping plan. You can see the light green trees here, the amount of retained mature vegetation as part of this project specifically along the pond and some of the major mature trees in the parking areas. Again, the pedestrian improvements, the circle here to the left showing the, the enhanced pedestrian scale and improvements along Tamil Vista, a landscaping strip, a larger sidewalk, privacy screening and a privacy fence. It is noted that staff at one point thought that the six-foot-high fence was too tall here along the property boundary. There was a condition to drop it down to four. The planning commission thought that six was fine, so it's been kept as six feet as part of the project. On the right here are the, the enhancements to the pedestrian path of travel, leaving the hotel lobby, crossing the park, parking lot, and then forcing folks or directing folks down towards the intersection to eliminate the pedestrian crossings that have been happening along Madera. In addition, there's sort of a bump out here, as you can see, along the landscaping along Madera. So really, this, it's a better path of travel than it is now where they, they sort of directly cross the street. Pond enhancements, they worked with ESA and with the Audubon Society to provide native plantings, remove invasives, really create a habitat enhancement, creating a public path along the eastern side with public parking in the parking lot. And the parking path will be open from sunrise to sunset. So getting into the floor area bonus, again, there are four distinct sections of which they're asking for 0.29 FAR points. They only need 0.24. We'll show you sort of the breakdown. The architecture, as shown, we think staff believes that it's of high quality, using good materials and it's aesthetically pleasing, and staff agrees 12 points that they're requesting should be applied. Environmental sustainability, a max 12 points total. If they meet this proposed tier-one compliance for sustainability, they automatically get those eight points, I believe the applicant's. Cal Green Consultants here tonight to speak to that. In addition, they're asking for two points for additional voluntary environmental options like the solar panels, gray water, gray water reuse, bike share and local shuttle. Community integration, as I mentioned there, including the community meeting rooms available with a signup sheet and a schedule. We've conditioned that, that they have to provide documentation so that staff can understand when these meeting rooms are available. And also there's a dedication to, of exterior space in the, in the pond preservation creation. So the applicant is meeting the, the total six points they're requesting. In addition, they, they are allowing the facility to be available for disaster recovery center, although the Red Cross has not formally accepted that the applicant is, is making that available and is providing additional services or, or opportunities for people to, to use the facility in case of emergency, including integrations with local disaster relief community groups. And lastly, the public realm, which is the enhancements to the pedestrian area, again, the Tamil Vista frontage and the Madera frontage. So as you can see here in this chart, this is the available points, 0.7 on the left. The requested points, 0.29 down the middle. And staff generally agrees with the applicant's proposal. And although they only need 0.24 to get to the 0.58, which with their requesting, staff felt that there was no need to sort of come to some sort of decision about where those points might be shaved. And just as it is approved, in condition, the project is 0.58 FAR and 118,000 square feet. Really quickly to show you that the project as proposed is, is consistent with other municipalities in Marin County. It's no larger or no, no more intense than some of the other communities, as you can see, places like Sandra Fowler exempted from FAR, other communities like San Antonio have a, have a two FAR or higher. And here's a, here's a quick breakdown of some of the other hotels in some of the other communities, how big they are, what their FAR. This project is, is well within, in other jurisdictions. R ratios. GHD was hired to prepare an environmental evaluation. They tiered off the floor area bonus, initial study, were able to incorporate a lot of the best managed practices as well as some of the mitigation measures. The significant impacts that were evaluated in this document were able to be reduced to less than significant levels with mitigation measures for the following biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials, traffic and transportation, and tribal impacts. And our environmental consultant is here tonight if you have questions specific to that document. The town did receive three comment letters, Caltrans, the Marin Audubon Society, and a resident share along Chin Hadi. And those responses were prepared and included as part of the planning commission staff report. Here are some of the key mitigation measures. It's really a lot of assessment and evaluation, either pre-construction or during construction to make sure that there are no impacts as a result of the project. Again, the, the applicant has gone through their public review. We have a list of the, the various meetings linked to on the, on the project's webpage. And the, the applicant has engaged the community and is continuing to engage the community throughout the project. The planning commission voted 5-0 to approve all the resolutions. They did have some suggestions or requests to design changes. They asked the applicant to look at the entry canopy, the weight of the support posts. They asked to provide continuity in facades, material color selections. And as I mentioned earlier, keep the privacy fence along Tamil Vista at six feet. The public comment of the planning commission, there were only four public comments. They were all in support of the project. There were some comments about enhancing the pond water quality as well as the berm. Request for safety improvements were suggested by the bicycle committee. There was comments about additional bird safe design, additional native plantings. And then the Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter saying how they were approving of the significant economic contributions. And I will note that in the staff report, we talked about the fiscal impact. Approving this project would, would bring additional monies for the transient occupancy tax greater than what we've been anticipating or expecting from the Best Western as of today. One thing the applicant did provide was this revision. Again, we're going to let the applicant speak mostly to the design and decisions, but as you can see in the upper sort of rendering here, there's sort of a, a staggered pattern of browns and grays and light grays. So as not to create one uniform pattern, the planning commission felt that that was was sort of incongruous, so they asked them to do a, a repeating pattern. And then you can see it here as these, these wood panels are more consistent. So that concludes my presentation. Again, before you, you have the three resolutions, 09, 10, and 11, 2022. Staff is recommending approval of the project. So you have the three resolutions for, one for the initial study mitigated negative declaration and MMRP. Number 10 is for the conditional use permit floor air bonus, and number 11 is for the preliminary precise plan and designer view. You can also approve the resolutions with, with conditions or you can continue the item and request additional information. And with that, I will conclude. If you have any questions, we answer them. Happy to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant has their own presentation.
Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Sean at this point? I don't see, I guess scroll down, don't see any hands raised. So with that, if we can go ahead and move on to the applicant for their presentation, thanks. And Adam, can you do a brief introduction, please, of the applicants for us? Thanks.
Absolutely. So tonight we'll be hearing from Garrett Grealu, who's the project applicant. Representative with Renaissance Hotels Incorporated. And then we'll also, I'll let him introduce the rest of his team, but we have. Our representatives from the architect, landscape architect firm who worked on this project. As well as sustainability advisor, I believe Amy Ryder, we're still trying to get Amy actually onto a panelist, but. She'll be available for questions and. I'll let Garrett take it away from here and. A team available to answer questions.
Thanks. Is she the one with her hand raised and the phone number?
No, I don't think so. Now she's got her hand raised.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, you're good.
Perfect, okay. Well, good evening. My name is Garrett Grealu with Renaissance Hotels, owners of the Court of Madera Inn. Renaissance is a family owned business. We have been. No, what's going on there? There we go. We've been a part of the community for. For really many years, actually, since the mid seventies, probably making us one of the longer tenured businesses in in Court of Madera. We're very excited about the project we're proposing this evening. We believe it's it's a good fit for the side and and a good fit for the community. Access G F A is our project architect. Corey Krap is a principal with Access G F A. Corey actually lives here in Marin County. Also on Corey's design team is Rory O'Connell. Rory is the lead designer and he'll be presenting. Later this evening, also presenting this evening is Tom Holloway with K L A Landscape Architecture. And as Adam mentioned earlier, Amy Ryder is our Cal Green Consultant, and she's certainly available for any questions that you might have. Next slide, please, Rory. We are proposing a hundred and forty nine room residence in. Residence Inn is Marriott's upscale extended stay branded hotel. Extended stay means that all the rooms will have small efficiency kitchens conducive to longer term stays. It doesn't mean though that all the stays would be long term. In fact, we'd expect expect less than ten percent of our stays to extend beyond thirty days. And certainly, the majority would be less than five days. So in many ways, this would be a traditional hotel. We are proposing about thirty five hundred square feet of meeting space, which is similar to what we currently have at the Court of Madera Inn. That much meeting space is is not really typical for residents in, but we believe it's an important component of this project. The facility will not have a full service restaurant, but we would have, we would serve breakfast to our guests in the morning. And we would have a small bar serving late snacks or late snacks in the evening. High quality design. Certainly, the hotel land use ordinance and the and the planning commission had had made it real clear that we needed to put forth a high quality design. I just want to emphasize that that really was consistent with our objectives as well, because certainly. High quality design and acceptance by the community is really critical to our our long term success. Next slide. Thank you. Hotel land use ordinance, I know Sean talked some about this. I'll be talking a little bit about environmental sustainability and community integration. Rory will speak to public realm site planning and design. Next slide. Okay, environmental sustainability. We will be required complying with Cal Green Tier One, which which is really a very comprehensive and demanding standard. And certainly, Amy can speak to that in detail if you have specific questions. In addition to Cal Green Tier One, we are planning several voluntary options, the most significant of which is a solar P D system. We are planning to install about three hundred eighty or eighty rooftop panels, solar panels. Which would generate about two hundred fifty thousand kilowatt hours annually. Which represents roughly twenty five to thirty percent of the facility's total demand for electricity. Also, on the energy side, we're proposing a guest room energy management system that would automatically turn off lights. And set back heating and cooling temperatures when rooms are unoccupied. And we're also finally on the electrical side proposing fourteen E V charging stations, which actually is a is a tier one requirement. But we will also be providing infrastructure for many more charging stations going forward. The planning commission had expressed an interest in a water reuse system. We looked at number systems and. Settled on a laundry water reuse system because the hotel does use a significant amount of water in in the commercial laundry. The system would save about six hundred and twenty five thousand gallons annually. To put that in perspective. Our annual water use in landscaping is projected at only four hundred and fifty thousand gallons, so certainly significant water savings with the laundry water reuse system. We plan on making bikes available free of charge to our hotel guests for use in and around town. We're also planning a hotel shuttle for shuttle and guests to and from the airport or places of business, local shopping, et cetera. Next slide. Community integration. We are planning to make our meeting space available free of charge to certain qualifying organizations. Those would be local. Nonprofit organizations, associations and groups. It would include full use of the facility, including meeting room setup, breakdown, et cetera. We were limited to about twenty meetings per year, but certainly if we had additional requests, we would consider those on a case by case basis. And we'd be happy to produce an annual report to the town if that was so desired. The pond. As I believe you're aware, the pond is sort of a remnant of the town's old flood control system, and it certainly has its environmental challenges. To really assist us in addressing those challenges, we hired ESA. ESA is a environmental consulting firm and they put together a habitat preservation and advancement plan, which. Basically involve removing non-nas, I'm sorry, non-native invasive crown cover shrubs and trees. And replacing them with native species, but doing it really very carefully and slowly over time so as to not. Disrupt sensitive environmental communities. Also, part of the plan is to preserve and restore landscaping around the pond and principally trees. That support the roosting of black crowned night herds. The public had expressed an interest in in really improving the public engagement in the pond and we. We came up with a few things there. First of all, we're proposing to dedicate a landscape area on the south side of the pond and provide some seating. We are proposing to restore the existing footpath between the highway and the pond and extending that. Extend that footpath further south and around connecting to Tamil Vista to provide a nice pedestrian connection. And Tom will speak a little bit more about that later. Also planning to provide public parking near the pond, not dedicated upon, but but party very convenient for the pond for anyone who. Chose to use it. And then finally, there's an existing berm separating Highway one oh one and the pond, which acts as a nice sound barrier. And we're proposing to extend that berm further south and perhaps increase it in a few areas where it gets a little low. In an effort to do even a better job sheltering the pond from the noise of Highway one oh one. Next slide. Last item under community integration, we plan to make the facility available to the Red Cross in event of a large scale disaster. Also, we have talked to the Madera Gardens N R G about making the facility available. In the event of a large scale emergency as a command center and and also making the moving facilities and public areas available. We also discussed with them the thought of. Story emergency applies, community emergency supplies at the facility. They're currently stored at Neil Commons in the trailer. Currently, the Madera Gardens N R G actually prefers that location, but we've made it clear to them that. Should they change their mind, we'd be happy to accommodate them. And also importantly, we discussed the idea of putting a block after that hotel to sort of maintain regular engagement with the N R G. More recently. The N R G is sort of covering Court of Madera and parts of Larkspur has expressed an interest in in being involved and as has Sirt and. All those discussions are very preliminary, certainly we're confident that we can come up with an arrangement that would work for everybody. Rory, that is it. You are on. Rory, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
All right. Thank you, Garrett. Thanks for the lead in. I'm Rory O'Connell, Design Director with Access G F A Architects. Been working on this for a couple of years with Garrett and Tom and Corey. Garrett, thanks for the intro. Town Council, thank you so much for taking the time on a weeknight to review our project. Looking forward to talking about it. Want to thank Sean and Adam and the planning commission for all their help guiding the project and giving us feedback so far. And the public, we've had great public engagement on this project going back, you know, to two years, two years plus, really helped us get to where we are. So I'm going to try and keep this quick. We had a very long deck we went through in some previous meetings, but I don't think we need to spend all night, but happy to, you know, show you. How we got to where we got and happy to answer your questions later if that comes up. Just to a starting point. In order to meet the criteria of the land use ordinance, we were required to provide, you know, this, a site specific. Architecture concept that respects natural systems, engages the local realm and has quality, durability and aesthetic appeal. You know, Residence Inn is a Marriott product that is rolled out nationwide. It's it's a higher end product. We have made a substantially customized proposal, which differs substantially from. The standard model for that hotel so that it is very much of of Court of Madera. I'm sure you're all very familiar with where we're talking about, but just as a reminder, it's this it's this. Site between the highway and Tamil Vista, just north of the town center. The the sort of short version is that what's there right now is a is a low rise. Aging building pressed to the perimeter of the site right up against Tamil Vista. And the approach that we took with a denser. Hotel proposal was to have a slightly taller building in the center of the site pushed back from the edges so as to be a better neighbor. And we're also looking at sort of stepping it so that we go with four stories towards the highway and three towards the neighborhood. Four stories where it's the more intensive activities like laundry, three where it's a little bit quieter. And sort of sectionally, one of the design intents here was that the the horizon, in the point at which the the building meets the sky. Wouldn't change all that much for somebody across the street, across Tamil Vista. So to be a good neighbor, we're not, you know, it's taller building further away. So the the horizon's in the same place. And early on, we tested that with some shadow studies to make sure we weren't going to be shading the neighbors. So summer, you're not really seeing any shadows leaving the site. And then in the winter, it's really only shading the highway in the evenings we need to be concerned about. So sort of just some some quick highlights, I'll turn this over to our landscape architect, Tom, in a moment, but. Wanted to highlight that we're proposing to eliminate the the two curb cuts on Madeira Boulevard. That's a bit of a hairy intersection, so combining that into one that's closer to closer to Madeira. Single point of access to the site. We want to have a main entrance that faces Madeira Boulevard that has a real sense of arrival. We want to have a double height lobby so that when you drive by or arrive, you sort of look right through the building into the courtyard that really. It reinforces that sense of arrival and that's sort of processional entry. And then we have two wings of guest rooms, a short one to the west, which is meeting rooms at the ground floor. And then four stories stepping down to three heading north and then surrounded by parking. Preserving the pond, as mentioned earlier, and respecting a twenty foot buffer from that. And then I'll I'll turn it over to Tom from want to talk about some of the the site improvements, if that's all right.
Hey, thanks Rory. And thanks again, council members. We appreciate the opportunity. I think one of the things that that stands out the most with this site is the the way that the architecture is really centered. In the middle of the site and gives good setback all the way around, even on the Tamil Vista side. The closest the building gets is ninety feet away. So you can see there's just a huge difference from what's existing. Additionally, the building is set up a little bit, so as as part of the. Climate change. What's the word I'm looking for? To be able to make sure that we're outside of the tidal zone, the building is raised up a little bit higher, which really creates a nice sense of entry. As you move in, so the parking lot stays kind of low, but the building's up a little bit. So as you enter from the. From the Madera side with that two story volume that Rory was talking about, and just the way that you you enter up into the site and into the building. It really makes for a nice architectural treatment with the with the plant around the base of the building. Some of the the key elements is the way that the site is zoned. We've really kept all of the hotel. Guest amenity spaces within the courtyard in the middle of the hotel. So that's where we have our pool and our outdoor dining and lounge space, our meeting room terrace. All that happens and is is really protected by the building itself. And then as you as you pull away into the parking lot that surrounds, that's where we start to integrate some some trees and. And get some good screening. Rory, can you actually back up a slide real quick? Sorry, I wanted to point out what what Garrett was talking about earlier. The walkway that runs along the the east side of the site around Highway one oh one, it starts at Tamil Vista. Wraps around the site to the south. And then turns into a nature trail as it gets on the other side of the parking lot and and runs up along those existing redwood trees that are. And then the pond itself and then loops back through the parking lot of the office building that's there. So that provides a great. Public access pathway for for residents to go enjoy that space. And then adjacent to the pond also, like Garrett talked about, we're going to extend the the berm that's there. So it really does create a nice separation, even though it's right on Highway one oh one, when you're when you're in that trail and down a little bit lower. It it's amazing how quickly the sound goes away and and you feel like you're in a private space. Thanks Rory, we can go to the next one. And then one of the other key elements too is the pedestrian circulation that we talked about that Sean touched on. Right now, it's it's pretty easy for people to walk out to the driveway and just want to head across Madera Boulevard to town center. But the way we've designed this now is the people are directed to cross the parking lot. And then take the sidewalk down towards Madera Boulevard. But then there's a pretty good landscape buffer between the curb and the street and where the sidewalk is. Which really guides people to the intersection at Tamil Vista and Madera and crossing at a safe location where the crosswalk is. So it's one of the key elements we wanted to touch on. And there's also a good pedestrian connection on Tamil Vista. If you're going that direction. Go to the next slide. Plan material wise, we've really zoned this project. So the more intense landscape happens right in the courtyard space and right at the entry, but then we very quickly. Break out into the parking lot and then as you get into the pond where. We're really getting into native and adaptive species, very low water use. We'll work obviously with M M W D and meet and exceed their requirements. But the the landscape is very is very much zoned with the idea that. We're really incorporating native and adaptive species throughout, but especially as you get further away about water use. Requirements, the landscapes drops very quickly. Thanks Rory. The Tamil Vista frontage, we've been talking about that quite a bit and you can see just from this graphic. And you think about where the buildings are now, but we've greatly increased the amount of space for landscape screening. And for just the walkway experience along Tamil Vista. To create a much nicer atmosphere for the community. If we flip to the next slide, there's a cross section that runs through the the space. So with Tamil Vista on the left, there's a parkway strip six feet wide, a seven foot wide sidewalk. And in the middle, where the between the two people, you see a dashed line, that's where the fence is currently on the hotel. So you can see that we've really added quite a bit to the right as you get in closer to the hotel. We've got a berm with a fence, landscape screening along that fence, and it's not intended to be a continuous hedge. But multiple different species, so it it's a great view from the Tamil Vista side. And then there's even additional landscaping on the inside of the project where we've got our stormwater treatment swales, and then of course, there's there's trees. Throughout the parking lot. And one of the things that I did forget to mention, that whole parking lot is laid out. To preserve as many of those large existing trees as possible. There's some awesome London plain sycamore trees. to preserve as many of those large existing trees as possible. There's some awesome London plain sycamore trees in the parking lot. And, and the, we, the reason that it kind of kinks around in some ways is because we, we designed the whole parking lot to save those trees. So I think that's all I have landscape-wise. Obviously, I'll be here to answer any questions and run through this pretty quick, but Rory, back to you.
Thanks so much, Tom. With that, we'll show you, this is the sort of existing condition along Tamil Vista with the recent repaving. And then what we're proposing from a similar perspective. Things to note here, the, the much widened pedestrian experience, the fence pushed back extra 15 feet, undergrounding of utilities and, you know, the, the three-story building along Tamil Vista setting up to four further away from Tamil Vista. And that's the new fence coming in here and the new planting. We've gotten to more detail on this in some of the workshops with the community, but we identified what we thought were the, the driving trends in vernacular architecture in Cort Madera and West Marin. These are the ones we identified as being fairly universal. Tried to work them into the architecture of the project as we designed it. We also looked at a couple of color palettes. We came to the planning commission a year ago. We came with a white building. We're advised that was not the way to go. And so we went, we went dark, which we're excited about. Well, we'll show you that in a moment. Just reiterate this kind of what's, what's there right now. And what we're proposing is this. Can see an emphasis on, on planting along Madeira. Stepping of that building with the four stories towards the freeway, three towards the neighborhood. This large welcoming port cochere canopy, the view straight through that lobby where the ceiling of the port cochere becomes ceiling of the indoor space. We're going to talk about these columns a little bit more later. And then just as this palette of dark materials, a natural wood material to provide some softness and a, a division between top, middle and base to wrap around the building. As I think Sean mentioned earlier, we were asked about the sort of randomness of the facade, which we had done to try and create some variety, not too much of one thing. We were encouraged to look at a design which had more uniform bands vertically and horizontally of materials, everything aligns. I think that's actually an improvement. So this is what we're proposing for the, the elevation from the, from the highway. So you're seeing this existing berm with some additional height and about 35 extra feet of length to provide better screening to the, the pond environment nature walk. You see the kind of the, the lowest floor of the hotel disappears behind some of that planting. And this is even a fairly high camera angle. So from the road, you'll see a little bit less. Taking the existing freeway sign, which is currently multicolored and making it sort of more subtle monochromatic. And we also wanted to take some steps to make this not look like a single long serpentine building. So we introduced these sort of knuckles where the building changes direction to try and make the appearance of it being sort of more of a cluster of small buildings rather than one overwhelming mass. Quick note on signage. So we're going to have a monument sign along Madeira, retaining the existing highway sign and then a, a single illuminated sign at the, the third to fourth floor facing Madeira as well. Residence Inn, it's sort of a, a monochrome palette, more subtle. As far as the elevations go, you can see we kind of have a, a rhythm of grays and wood colors. We have these, uh, wraparound roof projections that provide shade to the building, provide a little more definition and also sort of provide a cap and emphasize that language of sort of horizontality that we saw in a lot of the best architecture in the region. Together wraps around the building as well. And there's a, a note sort of on, on what we're seeing. This is, is just a section through sort of a typical guest room showing what we're talking about. We talk about these, you know, projecting roofs and these projecting bands where some of these guest rooms step back a couple of feet to create some more relief in the facade. On the material front, we did drop off a material board last week. I'm sorry it got there so late. I wish there was more time for you all to review it before we had this meeting, but I think it'll, it'll be there for a while. We're looking for a palette that that sort of blends with what's in the, the neighborhood, but also sort of a long-term durability, you know, can be cleaned, isn't going to fall apart, is going to look as good 20 years from now as it does today. And with that in mind, we're looking at sort of a, a high-pressure laminate real wood system to provide these accents at the corners and at the soffits. We're looking at a ceramic system for these towers at the lobby and at the front stair and elevator. A sort of a nod to the existing stacked stone architecture of the lobby buildings on site at the moment. And then accents in dark metal. A lot of Eiffel Stucco type products. It's very energy efficient. It's very handsome way to put a building together. And then we're looking at glass, which is slightly reflective. It's about 15%. So that we drastically reduce the amount of solar heat gain into the guest rooms through the glazing. So this is the proposed arrival view, really again emphasizing that sort of transparency of the lobby. We really like these Y columns. We were asked to take a look at them following the last planning commission meeting. We've prepared some alternatives. One of the criticisms was that these look too spindly. People don't quite believe that they will hold the roof. It looks, it looks incongruous. So the first option looked at was just a, a boulder addition of the same thing. So these are same design thicker elements. I think this is a, a fine solution. We also looked at simplifying. So these are, you know, beefier round sections rather than these sort of more slender profiles, the taper. We looked at maybe doing this in, in a glue lamp. And we looked at something which is more sort of industrial with an eye channel rather than with the taper profiles we're looking at before. So that's our presentation. This is what we're thinking of for the, for the courtyard. I know Garrett would love to have anybody who wants to to come in for a coffee or drink and see this place when it's open. Thanks for taking the time to review it. I, I hope you can support it and I look forward to answering any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that. Adam, if you can get us back to, so we can see everybody on screen, please. Thank you. With that, I'm going to bring it back to town council members for any questions of either staff or the applicants. Now use plural for applicants. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, Leela, go ahead. Why don't you start us off?
Thanks. And thanks for the detailed presentation. I'm really impressed with just the, the thoughtfulness that went into every single element of this and really appreciate it. I, I had a question about the pedestrian crossing at, at Madeira Boulevard. Am I understanding correctly that people will be directed to cross kind of in front of the, to go around in front of the bank and cross there? Or will they be directed to go all the way behind the bank into Tamil Vista and then cross? Cause I know there's another, there's a gate exit over on Tamil Vista.
There is a, there is a gated entry over on Tamil Vista and that is an option for pedestrians if they're, if they're heading in that direction. But you're absolutely right. What, what we're, what we're doing is, is we're, we, we know that people, when they come out of the hotel are going to want to be going to town center across the street and that's, that's your line of sight, right? So we've got the sidewalk access and we worked with, with the Public Works Department to take that sidewalk, keep it separated from the curb. So we've got a pretty full landscape strip. You basically have to trudge through the landscape to cross Madeira at the mid-block and take them up to the crosswalk that's on Tamil Vista and Madeira, which you basically just said basically to new hands. You would just cross over Madeira at that intersection instead of mid-block.
Thank you.
While we're on pedestrian, I have a quick question because I think you did a great job on Tamil Vista with widening the sidewalk there and putting trees and plants there and the same thing on Madeira. But from a town standpoint, are we going to be doing any improvements on Tamil Vista and Madeira, that intersection? I know we had talked some, you know, a couple of years ago about a roundabout. I know that didn't work out. And I'm bringing this up because it seems like the timing is ripe to coincide with this project to improve that intersection, especially if they're going to be directing pedestrians and we're going to have bicyclists potentially coming from that hotel and using that intersection. I don't know if RJ, you want to address that or Adam?
Sure. I'm sure I'm happy to jump in. So we do have a roundabout design for the Madeira and Tamil Vista intersection. We did have some criticism at the time of whether to push that forward when we did the Tamil Vista, the complete street project, as I'm sure you're aware. And so I think we definitely can revisit that. There's also some other concepts out there about how to improve the pedestrian crossing. And, and I think it's part of the next, you know, year or two as this project is getting built, I think it makes sense to open those discussions and, and have a community dialogue and see what makes the most sense. And, and I think that's probably my recommendation about next steps. But we don't have a, a schedule in mind to construct that as of yet. I think we need more dialogue with the community.
All right. Thanks. I may just have a few comments around that. And one other question on the applicant side is that we're employee parking? Where will employees be parking? Will that be in the parking lot or I want to stay on the street because there won't be any street parking?
Yes, they, they would be parking in the parking lot. We actually have more spaces than, than required. So that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Anybody else? Questions? Go ahead, Eli.
Thank you Fred. Just a couple of quick questions. First is the, the grab and go market. Is that intended to be public?
It, it can, is that really intended to be public? No, it, it's really intended to be for internally used only. Not that we would turn down the public, but it wouldn't get that kind of use most likely.
Understood. Thank you. And then my second question, could you please speak to us a little bit about how the plantings you've selected for the site? Not talking about the pond because you guys did a great job of documenting that, but just for like the parking lot and general landscaping. Can you talk to us about how those were selected in a way that they're going to contribute to a healthy local ecosystem?
Yeah, we've used a wide variety of plant species. So we're not trying, we're trying not to create a monoculture, but, but have a bunch of different planting in there. We're, we're definitely pulling from the, the native and adaptive, as, as I mentioned previously, of similar climates with, with an eye towards right plant for the, for the right space. So more dwarf varieties, not creating a situation where we've got to do a lot of pruning to keep them to the size that we want. We're also looking at plants that flower at different times of the year so they can create habitat for especially pollinators. But, but birds and, and all the other good stuff that like to live in the plantings. And, and I think I mentioned too, you know, water use of course is critical in Marin. And, and, and really working with MMWD to make sure that we're, we're achieving that, that low water use. The plant palette that we put together that's, that's in the documentation is sampling of, of plantings that, that would and could be appropriate. As we move through the design process, that is going to get further refined and, and I think we'll probably see even more drought tolerant and more native plants coming into the, to the project. We kept a keen eye on making sure we don't have invasives and I think that's it.
That's fantastic. You hit everything I wanted to hear. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks Eli. Charles?
Yeah, my question is probably for RJ. So in a couple of the renderings and just in general in that area with the change in the curb cut, there's, I drive that street every day to get onto the freeway. And you know, I feel like it, it's always been a little bit hazardous with the sewer, suicide lane. So has the town or a traffic study been done about the effects of the new location? Or would that happen after approval? As far as cross-traffic with the town center and the, the Chevron. And also, you know, one thing that I think would also, in the same way that they're proposing to redirect traffic of the pedestrians by creating a one-way to a turnaround that then turns you back to go onto the freeway or that kind of thing. So we stopped the cross-traffic between those three heavily trafficked her cuts might actually really increase car and pedestrian safety overall. But I didn't know if that had been looked at and I hadn't seen anything or heard, heard it discussed and, and the fine points that have been discussed. But if not, I, I really would like to see that discussed moving forward. Not that it's the hotels issue, it's town overall kind of concern.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to it unless there's someone from that product team that would like to. So actually, if I understand the question, question correctly, there are currently two driveways that enter the existing hotel. And they're actually proposing to remove one and remove the one that is closest to the freeway, which I actually view as a benefit. Right? It's, if you're coming off the freeway, you're kind of look around the corner and very abruptly, very quickly, you are met with the driveway and cars could be going in or out. And there's not ideal reaction time that you would want to see in a, in a kind of design of today's standards. So I see that as one of the bigger benefits of shifting people further away from 101. There are some, you know, a lot of movements at that area, but I think it's overall, I'm, I'm very much in that positive in my mind.
Great. Yeah, that's, thanks for answering that question. I think, you know, we can, we should look at ways to improve it even more, I think. But I really appreciate the single yes. Not, not on, not on the hotel proposition team, but as a town, just to be clear, I'm happy with the move on the applicant side.
Thanks Charles. Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and open it for public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak regarding the residence hotel, please raise your hand. And we have one hand raised by Pat Ravazio. Rebecca, if you can bring her over, please. And then after that, I believe we have Joel. Go ahead, Pat. You should be able to speak.
Hi, thanks very much for taking my call. First of all, a couple of things. I love the way the entry looks. I think we've gotten in trouble in Cort Madera when we have appointed and elected people trying to dictate their tastes over the architects. We have great architects here. Please let's get all the cooks out of the kitchen and let them do a beautiful job, which I think they've done. I do think as far as the pedestrian safety there, you're going to need to have either signage or something coming off the highway that says there's pedestrians likely to be here, even if you're trying to keep them out of there. They're going to take the shortest path to the town center. We know that. And with that, I think you could put in a boulevard there. That's a really wide street. And if you had a boulevard, it would at least give a safety pedestrian island there for those who are going to, you know, make the run. Or maybe then you could put in a pedestrian access point somehow so they could follow their instincts and get over to the town center. My, my big concern, my only big concern is I'm seeing sort of a hands-off attitude about the pond itself and the water of the pond. And back in 2014, we listened to a biologist do a beautiful job explaining what it would take to really revitalize the pond so that it with some aeration and some water movement, it would really become a wonderful example of how pristine this kind of feeding pond for birds could be. And what I would like to request, I know we have a really good environmental group on board now, which thrills me. Can we please at least get a proposal of what it would cost to do that? And then maybe we can raise the money from the community. We have a very environmentally minded community. And I think by keeping our hands off the water, we're missing an opportunity to really live up to the intent of the new zoning, which is to restore and preserve the pond, not just the habitat around the pond. So some kind of accountability fit in maybe every couple of years, we take a water quality test and we look at what's happening there habitat-wise. And so it doesn't, doesn't get neglected. And then the only actual question I had was I see there's something new in the plan, which I didn't like at first, but the more I thought of it, I think maybe it makes sense was that you would close off that pathway along the highway between sunset and, and sunrise. And I think that's probably fine if you don't want to light it and make it sort of a evening kind of place where homeless could live or what teenagers could smoke or whatever. We don't want people to do in, in dark places. So I'm just wondering how you would, how you would manage that and the security. But that's all. And great job, Garrett. Thank you so much. I'm so looking forward to seeing. But that's all. And great job, Garrett. Thank you so much. I'm so looking forward to seeing you build this beautiful hotel.
Thanks, Pat. Next, we have Joel.
I'm sorry.
Julie, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes. Joel Joe's heart from 107 Corder Madera Avenue. Also have my business at 201 Corder Madera Avenue. Also a former planning commissioner. Wanted to just say how impressed I am with the comprehensive proposal. I reviewed the package and sat through the presentation here and was very impressed at the evolution of where you've gotten to with this project. And I'm fully in support of it. The only comment I had was about the Y columns for the port crochet and the canopy. I thought they they looked good as they are, but if there was a second choice, I would maybe take the the bulkier Y column or the glue lamp. I know the glue lamp might present a long term maintenance issue in terms of keeping it sealed. But again, great design, fully in favor of it. Have to take my hat off to what what an evolution this has been to get to this point.
Thanks. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Guy followed by Julie.
Guy, you should be able to mute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, great. Thanks, everyone. Guy Benson, 425 Corder Madera Avenue. Been in Corder Madera since 1991. And yeah, look, I agree with what Pat said that again, the the style, not an architect, but the style is not exactly mine, but I agree that the point of let let the experts do the work. I think that's great. It looks like a good project. My comment would be that what I, and again, relatively new to seeing what's going on here. So maybe just call it inexperienced, fresh eyes, looking at what I see and looking at the renderings, there is quite a bit of landscape that looked like it's intended to provide screening from different venues, from the freeway, I'm sure from across the street. And I have personal experience, the town has experience where developments have gone on with proposed landscape screening that ends up never taking place. And the buildings end up being built and then the developer kind of ignores the screening, ignores and the town is not followed through to make sure that that what was proposed for the project is 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 actually enforced. So I would be sure to, whether it's through your, I know in residential, it's called a certificate, it's a vocemency, whatever the the equivalent is for a commercial property. And we saw the same thing with the village, right? There's the supposed to be good landscaping on the highway kind of never happened. You know, they planted a little two foot things and they still don't have screening. So I would just make sure that the town is sensitive to making sure the developer follows through with the the screening as designed. And if it's supposed to be a if the plan shows a 15 foot or 20 foot, you know, tree, don't plant, you know, a two foot bush. And say, oh, it's going to grow in 30 years because that just it kind of defeats the purpose for what I think the landscape, you know, it's kind of screening from the, you know, what it looks like to all the neighbors and everybody around. So other than that, it looks like a well thought out project and appreciate everybody's work and appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thanks, Guy. Next up is Julie.
Julie, you should be able to mute yourself.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Oh. Julie from the Corder Madera Chamber, we would just like to show our support for the rebuild project. The hotel is good for the town and for the business community. We started the project back in 2014 and we would love to see the project move forward. The hotel is is at the entrance to the town and it's become outdated and no longer reflects the quality image that is indicative of our community. We'd love to see the new project that they are proposing be built. There are many benefits to the new hotel for the town. It generates TOT revenue and every dollar spent at the hotel. Guests spend a minimum of $1.25 in the local community, much of which is spent at local stores and restaurants like at town center and the village. We would like to ask the council to approve the project and we thank everyone who has worked so hard on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. I don't see any more hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any emails versus TCMail.org?
Thank you, Macasisa. I'm refreshing now and we did not receive any emailed public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment before we open it up to the town council for discussion and a possible motion, make that plural. Would the applicant and or staff like to address any of the issues or questions that were raised through public comment?
Fred, one thing is I want, based on comment, there's a follow up question I had, which was what is the whose responsibility is the actual water in the lagoon? If it was part of the old you know, stormwater, has it been, is it actually now going to be the hotels? If staff could clarify that, because I don't know that I've seen that clarified.
Yeah, I mean, so then we went through a lot of discussion back in the former project 201617 about what is the actual nature of of the pond and how it is connected to the town's stormwater system. And certainly it's there's been permutations. And I know actually, maybe RJ, you could speak to whether or not that's going to be evaluated as part of the current stormwater master plan update analysis. But but certainly it's not, you know, back in 201617, it was not really being utilized as part of the town's stormwater plan, even though it is connected to Lagoon One through a gravity fed pipe. And that's essentially how the water is controlled, although it's not actively controlled. And I think that was also I went back through the correspondence at that time. It's not actively controlled by the town in any manner because of the actual conditions, the grades and whatnot between Lagoon One and this pond. It can be flat at times, so it gets very infrequent sort of circulation or or exchange of water. You know, obviously, the the it's on the hotels and Brennison's property. And so obviously, they have been probably not to their not by choice, but they are responsible for, as you know, as part of the application, they're going to be providing some habitat restoration and are responsible for the trees around it and have been basically, you know, taking control of the pond surroundings. You know, I think it's complicated when you start to get into actually if Garrett and his team, they wanted to do something with the pond. We we commented on that back in 2017. I think the good thing is they're not actually proposing to change anything with respect to the pond and its connections at this point. And I will say in response to one of the other comments, one of the things while there was a presentation and a proposal to do aeration to improve some water quality back in 2017. Certainly, there was some disagreement about whether that could be actually adequately done and actually enhance habitat values at the pond. One of the reasons why actually the environmental analysis was so lengthy and complicated the last time around was because it was found to be as it was or as it is to contain sensitive natural communities and introducing anything new to it was going to and basically implicate some regional agencies in their evaluation of what would happen to the water quality and and potential impact to environmental resources. So that's a long way of saying it is. It is complicated, but it, you know, the town considers essentially this is on the property of Brennison Hotels and they are going to be the stewards of the habitat restoration and also the maintenance going forward. Surrounding the pond.
Thanks. Hey, Adam, can you also just address the question that came up about what the process is to ensure that the hotel, including landscaping, is built to plans and what's being presented with that?
Yeah. I mean, it's 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 a good comment. It can be challenging at times to ensure over years, obviously, that growth is happening in accordance with what was expected. But I think the village is actually a good example in that as those plants and the planting material was not performing well across the highway along the village, that entire frontage. The town, in fact, did bring back the village to ensure that they revise their planting plan and install appropriate landscaping. And it is it is flourishing now. If you go by there now, the oak trees entirely along the frontage are actually doing very well. And so that's an example of where the town actually does track these things. Ensures that we can enforce requirements with respect to landscaping and we expect to do the to do the same here. And they have a robust landscaping plan and landscape architect. Certainly at the time of approvals and installation, we're going to be reviewing those landscape plans carefully as long as well as MMWD for water efficiency and whatnot. And then we, you know, we will also work with Tom and and his team on ensuring that there's a monitoring aspect so that the planting materials do well going forward.
Thanks. Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
Just I just wanted to follow up then, Adam. So are you saying that based on your evaluation of the environmental study, aeration of the pond is not necessarily a good idea?
I think it's inconclusive. At the, yeah, I think I would say it's inconclusive. And so once you go in and try to aerate the pond, you are changing that the habitat values that exist currently at the pond. And it's it's unclear if you're going to actually create a better habitat and for who and for what. And I went back through some of the comments, there was a question from the Audubon Society, for example, that if you do aerate the pond, it may not actually produce the same quality of wood and grass or other material that the birds seem to be attracted to at at the pond itself.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Leela, would you like to start us off? I think I think you're muted.
Thanks, Fred. Yeah, I couldn't couldn't get that to come down. Thanks. Yeah. I, as I said earlier, I really appreciate the attention to detail that was put into these plans. You sort of ticked off all the major issues for me. So I I support this project. I still remain concerned about the pedestrian access. I just, you know, as one of the public commenter said, you know, I do think people will try to cross there. And I just wonder if there are other things we can do, maybe a sign that says, don't cross here or for town center cross, you know, go this way, or I don't know, or something that just looks forbidding. I think that would be worth considering just to avoid that because people already do it and it's it's really scary with all of the different turning and things going on there. But yeah, other than that, I really appreciate the attention to detail that you guys have put forward. And I think this would be a good addition to that area. So I would support it.
Thanks. Who's next? Eli and then Bob.
Thanks, Fred. You know, I'll just say I'm really excited about this project. I think I I think this has been a long time coming. You know, I think there's been a ton of hard work that's gone into this. I want to say fantastic work to to staff and to the planning commission, to the applicant and their team. I think the proposal that they've arrived at, you know, is a huge win for the Corder Madera community. Honestly, I think it's incredible. Just looking at what you've sort of given back to the community in addition to this, this, I think, very remarkable redevelopment project with undergrounding on Tamal Vista. You know, offering it up as a resource in in the event of a disaster. You know, the first time around, right, we had issues around the pond and you guys did just a 180 and said instead, we're going to embrace and restore the pond. I think that's brilliant. I think it's fantastic. And I think this is a really great thing for the community. So I would be thrilled to support this project. You know, I it's funny that Pat made her comment because I was gonna weigh in and say that I liked the elegant Y columns during the original design. And I was like, you know what? But you know, we're not up here to be designing this hotel. The hotel's designed. But I guess I'll just throw that in there. But, you know, other than that, I think really a fantastic proposal. So thank you.
Thanks, Eli. And thanks for not redesigning. Appreciate it. Bob?
Thank you. Yeah, what a huge leap forward from the first round on this. So thank you so much to the applicant and to the architects for doing this. Looks terrific. I love all the things you did to get the extra FAR. The Cal Green Tier One compliance is terrific. Solar EV stations, water reuse, I think is critical. It's going to become much more critical in the future. The community integration aspects are also wonderful. As far as the pedestrian crossing, we have talked about that a lot at BPAC and there is still a concern that people are going to still try to make that crossing. You have done everything you can to keep them from doing it. But we'll take another look at it. We're planning to take another look at it on BPAC and see what we can do to make sure that people don't cross Madera to try to get to the town center as quickly as possible. And we're going to try to make it more attractive for them. But I can support this also. It looks great. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Charles?
I just wanted to thank Garrett. I think when he walked me through the project at the beginning, when they were showing it, it was, I just was all smiles. I was very happy about what's coming to the community. And I can definitely make the findings. I think it's important, the community engagement. I like walking through the town center. I like walking through the village when I go for my walks as much as the nature. And I actually have never walked through the hotel space. But now with this kind of path, walking through there and I walk along that street and I feel so confined. I mean, I I just don't. I I want you to know that that's really important. The commute, that's a like micro level community engagement and it's really important. It makes an impact on our lives. And I wanted to thank you personally for that one. You know, and yeah, I can make the findings. It's going to be beautiful. And I was really excited about that interior lobby wall. I know that's not our purview, but and then also as far as the columns, I think the first, the thin elegant ones were the right move with that big floating mass, you know. And, you know, very tree like and other options. While I appreciate you studying them and it definitely was above and beyond. I don't think it's necessary. And I understood even the the sporadic, I think maybe you could have done a mixed pattern that had something else than the linear bars. But if Rory thinks that that is also acceptable and a good direction, I don't feel like we need to revert back or explore any other options. And I can just improve it as it is. But don't change the columns, please.
Thanks, Charles. For for me, I have a newfound appreciation for our planning staff, the planning commission, as well as the applicant. It seems like right now we've reached the peak. Many hours I know are put into this. It's all condensed down into about what an hour and a half presentation that comes to us for approval. And I think a lot of times I didn't really recognize or think about all the efforts that goes into this. And not just the hours, but I think you said it's been two years in the making. I think it's a great project. I think it's going to be a great addition to Corder Madera. One thing that was overlooked, though, is that it is going to add to our tax base also. I think Julie may have mentioned that. Love that you're keeping the pond and there'll be public access to that. And I also appreciate that. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. I appreciate the community rooms and that you're integrating with with the community that way. One thing I would like to see, but it's more from the town standpoint and maybe collaboration or slight partnership with the applicant is I think we need to not just look at that intersection of Madera and Tamal Vista. But I think we need to look at all Madera going down all the way to that intersection. When you exit that freeway, you're going to see on the right hand side, this beautiful hotel. And if you look at the way the street is now, it's not very appealing, yet we're welcoming people, including people that come into the hotel, to Corder Madera. So I think we need to make that more appealing in many ways. And whether that is like Pat mentioned, something in the middle with plants. But I just think we need to make it more appealing. So it's more welcoming to Corder Madera. But again, I think that's more on the town side. So with that, Amy, correct me if I do this wrong. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. We have three resolutions. I will be in my motion. So one, the first one is resolution number nine, oh, nine, two, oh, 22. adopting an initial study/ mitigated negative declaration for the project. Second resolution is Number 102022, approving a conditional use permit and hotel floor area bonus for the project. And number three is Resolution Number 112022, approving a preliminary plan and precise plan, including design review and sign permits for the project. And we have a second by Charles. Thank you. Second by Charles, if there's no further discussion, which I don't, Eli, go ahead.
I just wanted to chime in real fast, since I think a number of folks have brought up the, the kind of need to approach the pedestrian and traffic safety situation at Madera holistically. I have heard mentions and I, and I think probably RJ or Charles know more about this than I do, but I've heard mentions that Caltrans may or may not close the, either the on or the off ramp or possibly both at the end of Madera there. And I just bring this up to say that I think, again, you know, I think when we evaluate this with regards to pedestrian crossing at the hotel, with regards to vehicular traffic, with regards to, you know, a nice roundabout at, at Madera and Tamil Vista, I just think that we should make sure that we've got all the pieces to the puzzle together. And that's all I wanted to add.
Thanks, and I appreciate that. And what I think, just to chime with that, I think also we should look at the timing to try to coincide with the completion of of the hotel project, if it's possible within that time. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Rebecca?
Amy, is it one vote for all three items that were made under one motion?
Yes.
Calling three individual votes.
We, the, they're, they're hearing it all, all in one, so you can just do one vote. Everyone has, we have a motion on the table to approve all three resolutions.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
And Merkassisa.
Yes. And again, I appreciate you being with us tonight and all your efforts to get this done, or at least to this point. We really appreciate it. We're looking forward to it.
Real quickly, I just want to thank really Todd and Adam for helping us get to the finish line here. It's been not an easy process, certainly, but I think at this point, we feel good about the project and really appreciate all your support. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Item 6B, which is a first reading and possible introduction of ordinance regarding Chapter 1.08 of the Corder Madera Municipal Code, posting of ordinance and notices. And do we need a motion on this? Is this just a reading and introduction?
It's an introduction. So the motion would be to introduce the item and direct staff to bring it back for a second reading and possible adoption at the next meeting. But I can provide a quick summary if Mayor and Council would like.
If you can, please. Thanks.
Thank you, Merkassisa, members of the council. This is one of those house cleaning items that comes up once in a while, where staff and the town attorney realized that we had an ordinance on the books that dictated where the town was directed to post notices. Public notices, public hearing notices, resolutions, ordinances, all of our board and commission and committee agendas are posted at the three locations listed in the staff report. They were posted at the old Corder Madera Town Hall. The Pixley Avenue Post Office in the Glass Case in the lobby. And also posted by Fire Station 13 in the Glass Case outside of their building, which is located at 5600 Paradise. A lot of towns and municipalities, they, they post, they set these posting locations by, by resolution. And our town attorney felt it was prudent to revisit this at this time and repeal the ordinance and take it off the municipal code and bring it back to set the location, the posting locations by resolution. So if the council wishes to introduce this ordinance and direct staff to bring it back for possible adoption at the March 1st meeting, staff would bring back a resolution to set the posting locations. And in a sense, changing the 300 Tamil Pies location to our 240 Tamil Vista temporary location in the interim, and then it could be easily changed by resolution again when Town Hall relocates again.
Are there any questions from town council members? No, with that, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anybody wishing from, from the public wishing to speak on this topic regarding posting of ordinances and notices? Do we get any emails?
Any raised hands? And we did not receive any emailed public comments.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead, close public comment and bring it back to town council for either further discussion or a possible motion. And the motion would be to go ahead and introduce the ordinance and then move it forward for a second reading. Somebody like to make the motion? Bob?
I will.
Is there a second? Thanks. Is there a second? Eli's second? We'll give it to Eli. He was a little bit faster. With that, there's no further discussion. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Merkassisa.
Yes. With that, we have no business items tonight. We'll move on to council reports and town manager report. Todd, you're up. Unless you're multitasking with basketball games.
I'm multitasking. I'm just basking in our glory. That is us, our greatest town ever and the biggest little city in Marin. Just, just one quick update and then I'll defer to Councilmember Mongan, but we did have our first of many Jedi meetings. So it is, we're going to go with the Star Wars theme. But Jedi is the acronym for Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion. So that's our working group led by Councilmember Mongan, Chris Ragland, Lorena Barrera, and Rebecca Vaughn is our task force. And so we are meeting every, every other week, every other Tuesday and working towards a plan to bring to council for consideration quickly. So that is in progress and that is the only update I have for the council.
Thank you. With that one, we go to Eli, or I'm sorry, Leela first. Sorry, Eli. We'll dovetail off Todd's comments. Thanks.
This payback for Eli getting to second that one. Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Todd. That was a great first meeting. We have a really energized group and it's exciting to be thinking about these issues and how we can be furthering these values through the work we do in Corder Madera. I'm looking, I don't think I had any other. Yeah, I don't think I had any other meetings since the last meeting. So that's it for me.
All right, thanks. Eli?
Thank you. Had a League of Cities Executive Committee last week, just kind of setting the agenda for league division meetings going forward over the coming year. CMSA Finance Committee meeting and then a regular CMSA Central and Sanitation Agency meeting. The, the big news there is that CMSA is moving ahead with issuing pension obligation bonds to get their pension liability under control the same way we did here in Corder Madera. So I'm glad to see that. Attended a MCCMC Water Policy Committee meeting. Was really interesting. We heard from Congressman Jared Huffman. He joined us to speak about potential funding opportunities at the federal level for water conservation programs and, and I guess expanding water sources specifically with regards to recycled water. I felt like the, the takeaway wasn't hugely encouraging because he didn't have a ton to offer. He mentioned a couple of programs that he thought probably weren't going to be good fits for us. So I think the search continues there for funding, both at the federal and state level, but I'll report back as that unfolds. Other than that, attended a really good fire council meeting along with Bob. I'm sure he'll fill in any of the gaps that I leave, but we had two really killer presentations. One was just on kind of summarizing all of the incredible safety work that they've done. You know, vegetation management, maintaining and creating evacuation routes. Just incredible work of baiting hazardous properties, their free inspections for residents to help residents, you know, harden their homes and, and, you know, kind of try and fireproof our homes as best we can. So that was incredible. And then we also got a presentation from them on their, I think they called it the Fire Foundry Program. It's basically creating a pipeline for folks, especially younger folks, especially from disadvantaged communities, creating a pipeline for them to enter the fire service professionally, which I thought was incredible. Bob's gonna, I'm sure, fill in any details that I left out, but it was a really good meeting and we heard about some great work. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Bob?
Well, then I'll just step right in and I'll add a couple of things on the fire council meetings. We talked about, they conducted 2,782 inspections. They have treated 137 acres. This is just in Central Marin Fire. And they have collected 3,555 yards of chipped material. So they're making real progress in fire prevention work. We also had a police council meeting and we approved the audit. We did the same thing in the fire council meeting. By the way, we approved the audit. Everything's fine financially. Thanks.
Charles?
My TAM meeting hasn't happened this month, so it's coming up next, next council.
Okay, thanks. The only I had, I attended Central Marin Police Council, like Bob did. And just a quick reminder that next Tuesday, 5:30, Mayor's Forum and Ashley Howell, who is our Director of Park and Recreation, she's going to be our featured speaker. If there's no further reports, we do have the draft agenda. If anybody wishes to have any changes or anything added, please let myself or Todd or Rebecca know. And if there's no further business to come before the town council, I will go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting. And we get the trifecta tonight, because now we're heading in a sanitary district to meeting, our third meeting of the night. With that, I'll go ahead and call the SD2 meeting to order. Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Merkassisa. Board Member Beckman?
Here.
Board Member Mongan?
Here.
Board Member Avazia?
There.
Or Vice President Lee?
There.
And Board President Kassisa.
I hear. This time I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. This is opportunity for the public to speak on any item that is not on our agenda for tonight. Again, this is a sanitary two district meeting. If somebody from the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand. And I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
Thank you, Merkassisa. No, we did not receive any emailed public comments.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close public comment. We don't have any presentations tonight. We'll move to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed. They don't require further discussion. They can't be approved by a single motion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may request an item be removed for further discussion. And with that in mind, is there anybody from the board, staff, or the public that wishes to have an item removed for further discussion? I don't see anybody from the board, nobody from staff, and I don't see any hands raised. So with that, I will bring it back to the board for a motion to approve our consent calendar, which is times 4A through 4D. Bob's got his hand raised.
Move A through 4A through 4D.
Is there a second? Charles, be out again, Leela. I'm sorry, Charles, be out. So with that, there's no further discussion. I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Merkassisa.
Yes. We have no public hearings, no business items. Is there a district manager report?
Absolutely not. Great job.
That to me, no. Any board member reports? Okay, no board member reports. And again, we will have a potential agenda items for the next SD2 meeting. If anybody has any items you wish to add to the agenda, we want to revise it all, please let either myself, Todd, Rebecca, or RJ know. And if there's no further business to come before the sanitary district two board, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting also. I'm sorry, Amy? I'm sorry, you're on mute. I think you're still on mute.
I was just waving goodbye. It was a little premature.
You kind of scared everybody by going, oh God, what does she want?
I got a hold back next time.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. By the way, great job tonight with all three meetings. I appreciate, you know, all the support, all good news. So it's all good. Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.